I want to welcome you to, uh, the rules election. In fact, Andrew, I want to change the name, not now, remind me to tell you. Okay, you did, you already did. Anyway, welcome to this morning's committee, uh, uh, hearing. I'm joined with, uh, Mr. Marquis, Eric Stossen. So we have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, what, what do we have before us?
Uh, good morning, sir. We have, um, six items before us. Uh, all items have speaker cards. Uh, which items would you like me to read into the record?
Well, you know what, why don't you just read them all into the record and then we'll just go from there.
Okay. Item number one is a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Araceli Campos to the City Ethics Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2020. Item number two is a revised resolution and chief legislative analyst report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for the Los Angeles County's ballot measure H to increase the sales tax one quarter cent to fund essential homeless services. Item number three is a CLA report and resolutions relative to recommendations for the city's 2017 eight, 2017-18 state and federal legislative programs regarding housing. Item number four, city attorney reports, resolutions and ordinances relatives to options for a charter amendment to submit to the voters at the May 16th, 2017 general municipal election regarding civilian membership on the police board of rights. Item number five is motion Weston Englander courts relative to creating an ad hoc committee on the Los Angeles Police on the Los Angeles Police Department Board of Rights to review the criteria selection process and enabling ordinance that governs civilian hearing examiners. And item number six is motion Wesson courts Price Bonin et al. Relative to a report from the chief legislative analyst to the proposed ad hoc committee on the Los Angeles Police Department Board of Rights with respect to an implementation plan to conduct community hearings, comprehensive review of civilian hearing examiners, a report of liability claims payouts related to the LAPD, and an analysis of Copley versus Superior Court and other relevant cases related to transparency with respect to the board of rights.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna take, so I've got one individual that's signed up to speak on every item, that's Mr. Spindler. I give you three minutes. Come forward if you want to speak.
Go ahead, puppet.
For the record, there's no quorum. So we have item one, the Ethics Commission. No, you don't want to be on the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission is so corrupt. Me and Frank Lally were on the same side, on a fine, on a very fine sergeant. Sergeant Parker. And they railroaded him. Woo hoo. It was a railroad job. So you don't want to be on the commission with a railroad. No, on that one. So, Araceli, very nice lady, I'm very sure. You don't want to be on that commission. Join the commission on puppets. Yes. Now, item two, we don't want any more sales taxes, we got enough. Tax, 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 tax. How many taxes are there gonna have? There's not gonna be any jobs left in the goddamn place with all these taxes. We got enough taxes right now. We're going to wait for taxes, no one to. Then we have housing. Well, we know that that's a mess up. And then we have for, oh, the municipal elections. Here we go again. This time, we're going to play with police discipline. Copley versus Superior Court allegation that people who are captains on disciplinary boards are retaliated against if they go against the police commissioners. No, excuse me, the police chief, no, never you. The police chief's wants and desires. So in the hallway before the meeting of the rights board, Beck says, I want him fired. Now, if you don't go in there and do it, you get demoted. That's called retaliation. That's workplace violence against good cops. And we don't want that. We want honesty and integrity in everything with the department because they get sued if they screw up and people get killed in the field. Ninety percent of the good cops want a good, fair hearing. No more retaliation. Settle Copley. And yes, to transparency. So I will leave. The puppet will decide what he supports or not supporting, depending on this commissioner lady here, because she's very good. I'm going to listen to that. Frank Lally, I think, supports it, okay. But what I want is department policy. I want department policies to be fair. I do not want another Sergeant Parker who follows department policy and is forced at gunpoint to retaliate, to retire early. No more retaliation against good cops. Repeat after me, no more retaliation against good cops. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now I'm gonna call up, is it Denny, on item two? So why don't you come on up and then we'll get to the other item. So I'm gonna deal with this, then I think I'll do the commissioner and we'll get into the other thing. Yes, sir. And now, he's a, he's a one card, one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, Denny Zane, Move LA, here to encourage the council committee to recommend to the full council support for Measure H. There is a crisis, a humanitarian crisis and a moral crisis in our county. And thankfully, leaders like you are lifting the, making the effort to lead our community towards solutions. Measure HHH was an extraordinary victory. Measure H, when it passes, will be the complement to that. I am, in fact, I think, rather envious of the opportunity that you have to show the kind of moral and political leadership necessary to address crises of this nature. Thank you so very much. I urge you to go yes.
Thank you for coming down. On items, Mr. Harris Dawson. On items two and three, we can move those items unless you have a concern. So on item two, I would recommend that we adopt the CLA report and the revised resolution on item three, we adopt the CLA report as amended and delete Senate Bill 3237 from the low income tax credit reform bill and support similar legislation. So without objection, those items will be deemed approved. So, Ms. Campos, let's do item one now. Come forward. Welcome. And we thought maybe we'd give you a second to talk about, talk about yourself and, you know, what you bring to the commission is a very important commission. It's one that this committee deals with directly, one that we have a very good working relationship with the staff. So we're excited about you. So why don't you tell us a little more?
Thank you, council president, council member. My name is Araceli Campos. I'm, like many, I'm a first generation American, raised here in Los Angeles, product of LA public schools, graduated from Yale and Stanford Law Schools. I've been an attorney now for over 10 years. I've spent about five years in private practice, working on a number of investigations, defending clients also, investigations with the New York, former New York Attorney General. I've worked for five years as corporate counsel for a national Latino civil rights organization called MALDEF here in LA. Very sympathetic to how complicated the law can be and how important it is for us to make it accessible for well-intended organizations and people to abide by those laws. I went to law school, you know, because I believe so much in the rule of law. I mentioned I'm a first generation American, raised by a single mom, like so many in LA. And I really came to learn from my mom and my family was raised in Mexico and Cuba, how important the rule of law is. And so I'm a big believer in upholding those laws. I'm now an executive director of a nonprofit called the Miguel Contreras Foundation.
Oh, really?
Yes, which is a wonderful organization founded by labor and based at the LA County Federation of Labor that really exists to support underserved workers and families here in Los Angeles community.
Okay, well, I'll just say this, that I think that the Ethics Commission has always been a respected commission. I think that lately, it's even been more respected, more diverse, very objective, very smart, very helpful. And so, in my view, you prove to be a welcome addition. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And thank you so much for being here and making yourself available for the Ethics Commission. You and I have done a little bit of work together and rubbed elbows and I've been extremely impressed with not only your skills and talent, but your commitment to values and commitment to using your talents to make life better for people all over the city. Just a question, because someone like you is in extremely high demand. I know how many things you're asked to do and how many things you're asked to get involved in. What about the Ethics Commission for the city of Los Angeles appeals to you? And what do you hope to accomplish by being a part of it?
Thank you, great question. It's been an honor for me to serve the last seven years on the Commission on the Status of Women. I was the former youngest president of the Commission on the Status of Women and I really through that process as someone who didn't come into government the traditional way, meaning I don't, I don't, I have, you know, you know, first generation family that works in factories, that works, you know, working class, low income families. And I really thought this was an amazing opportunity to get involved in government, which it was not an opportunity a lot of folks that I know are able to do. And so for me, being on the Commission on the Status of Women, which I'm so grateful that you both support and that the council supports so much as we, as the commission goes on to CDOT implementation and all the departments and gender equity analysis in all the departments. For me, this is the next step in terms of being able to serve in a way that'll be impactful and very much aligned to my personal background as an attorney. And as I mentioned, I feel so passionate about the rule of law, especially in this day and age in 2017, where I think the folks who really understand the importance of having and upholding the rule of law will really, really be needed and make a difference at this time. So for me, it's where I feel I can make a big difference at this moment.
Excellent, thank you so much. If there's nothing further, Mr. Chair, I would love to move that we accept this nomination.
Okay, so then, without objection, we will recommend Araceli Campos to the full council. So without objection, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I'm honored, thank you.
All right, we're honored to have you. Okay, so that leaves us, Mr. Clerk, with four, five and six. Why don't we pull all of those together? We have a, hurry, we maybe, you might even be able to do it from there for now. We have a technical change, you want to read that? Or who has that change? Or is it you, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have the amendment to item number four. The amendment reads as follows. Replace the ballot title in question in the city attorney report resolutions and ordinance for option one with the following and request the city attorney to submit all amended documents for council consideration on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, the amendment reads as follows. Civilian review of police officer disciplinary matters. Charter amendment. Shall the charter be amended to allow the city council to provide that a police officer who is entitled to a police department board of rights hearing for a disciplinary matter may select a board of rights composed of all civilian members?
Thank you. So I'm gonna go jump into public comment, but we're fortunate to have with us today not only a friend of Los Angeles, but one of our commissioners on the police commission. I want to ask Ms. McLean Hill to come and sit at the, Cynthia McLean Hill to come sit at the center table. And I want to, do we want to bring up members from the public to give statements? Or would you like to speak first or whatever? We want to accommodate you.
Is this one working?
I think they're all working.
Terrific. Council president, first, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to speak first. I actually, as you know, a member of the department chief Phil Scott is being sworn in as the San Francisco Police Chief today. And so I'm on my way to the airport to be present at his swearing in, so.
Give him our best and we tell him we miss him.
Absolutely, and I will do that. You know, I'm pleased and thought that it was very important to be here today to lend my support and to provide comments to the item number four and item number five. I want to say that as a member of the civilian oversight and governance infrastructure at LAPD, I am very much committed to and expansion of and believe in the importance of civilian participation. It is critical as we think about public trust and the importance of trust in general with respect to our institutions, that that be universal, that it be both inside and out. And to the extent that we can try and innovate with respect to discipline and look at, over a two-year period, the impact on trust, both internal and external of the department, of the civilian and all civilian panel. I think that that's an important thing to move forward. I also believe that that is but one of the things that we should be looking at. It's important that we not only look at the option of board of rights comprised of civilians, but that in doing so, that we look at the composition of those civilian panels, that we are sensitive to issues of diversity, both in terms of diversity, as in ethnic diversity and other kinds of diversity, but also diversity of experience. So that we can bring in perhaps voices of retired police officers, et cetera. So criteria around selection is an item that I think it's critical to look at. And that as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners, I too am committed to doing my part in moving that agenda forward. With respect to item five, I am excited about the prospect of this body moving into the community to look at how we can further, further improve and strengthen transparency and other aspects of our system. Again, to both create a level playing field, but also to increase the understanding of how these matters work as these things will contribute to a better discipline system and the understanding of the public and the public's trust overall. So those are my comments. I am grateful that this body is taking this matter and moving forward with all due speed.
Thank you. You know, have a safe flight. Really appreciate you adjusting your calendar to spend some time with us. So thank you very much, Commissioner. All right, good. I was, there may be a need to expand the number of individuals that sit on this ad hoc committee that will be out in the community. I think it's, at this point, it is scheduled, or not scheduled, but we're talking about three. But maybe we expand that to five. I might even try to ask my good friend, Marquis Harris Dawson, if he'd participate. So that's what I'm thinking about doing it. I view this as a great opportunity to go out. Okay, so you know, I think what we want to do now is we want to, I'm gonna ask Jay Handel to come forward and then I'm gonna ask a series of folk to come up and talk about their views on this item. So, Mr. Handel, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Jay Handel. I'm the co-chair of the Budget Advocate Citywide Treasurer of the West LA Neighborhood Council. And I am a current LAPD Commission Hearing Examiner since 2007. I'm here to support the ballot measure that would allow the voters to create an option for an all civilian review board for the police disciplinary matters. Now more than ever, the voters should decide whether increased civilian participation would improve or create more confidence and trust in the discipline system. As an active member of my community, we are always pushing the city to be more transparent, more inclusive, and to listen to the substantive input from people in the community. An all civilian panel for all police disciplinary hearings will go a long way in building more community trust of the city and the department. I urge you to adopt this motion and place the all civilian matter on the ballot. Let the people decide this important question. I look forward to thanking the council for acting on this issue and to seeing this measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so if I can get Karen to come forward from Community Coalition, is she, I can flip the order if she's outside. Ms. Abdullah, would you like to start it off then? Malina Abdullah, come on forward. And I'm gonna let you finish your thoughts, so don't. And I'm going to let you finish your thoughts, so don't feel like you. So go right ahead.
Thank you. So, good morning. I think it's really important that we're talking about police discipline, but I think it's also important that we think about what it is we're doing to strengthen police discipline at a time when we have a new person sitting in the Oval Office who's kind of giving more space for police abuse, proposing things like a national stop and frisk law. It's really important that we not enact policies that on their face may seem as if they're strengthening discipline, but actually weaken it. And so our concern, as Black Lives Matter, with this proposal is that it gives police officers the choice around who will discipline them. And we think that that weakens discipline and it doesn't strengthen it. And so we want to encourage you, as Council President, to think about how do we create a policy that actually protects communities and involves the community in the conversation before a decision is made? And so we're asking that you do that, make amendments to this motion so that it actually strengthens discipline.
Thank you. So Karen, thank you for coming down. Good morning to you.
Good morning. I think it's very timely that we have this discussion as we approach the 25th anniversary of the 1992 civil unrest, as well as the five-year anniversary of the death of Trayvon Martin. We are encouraged that the City Council is taking up this issue and taking leadership in addressing discipline of LAPD officers in this city. However, we would, Community Coalition is seeking and asking that the motion be amended to allow for a self-social investigation process, a process that is outlined in the motion that was presented on Friday and that this body will take up, to ask some very hard questions about the disciplinary process in totality, not just one peg of it, which would be the board of rights and the composition of the board of rights. Instead, we would like to and encourage you all to do a comprehensive review of discipline of LAPD officers and make comprehensive changes to the discipline process instead of a piecemeal approach to reform. So we would ask that this most, the ordinance, the language be amended to allow for City Council and enable City Council to make any additional changes to the board of rights and the disciplinary process that would be informed by social investigation, the hearings that have been outlined that might be a part of the process, the data that's been, will be gathered as a result of the motion that was presented and introduced on Friday that will be heard by this body. Reform should be informed by information, data gathering, and ensuring that all stakeholders have a say in that process.
Thank you. Okay. If I can get Mr. Pete White and Peter from the ACLU come on forward. Mr. White, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here to speak on this very important topic this morning. The ballot initiative as, that you have before you actually weakens the disciplinary process as we know it. We believe that any process that gives officers an option of either going the traditional route, two command staff plus one civilian, or the new route, three civilians, which the CLA's report shows is a more lenient option for officers, is going in the wrong direction. We believe that the current ballot proposal needs to be amended to include the opportunity for a full-scale airing of not only the board of rights, but the police commission as well, and figuring out the real role of real Angelinos to be involved and engaged in the disciplinary process. We talk a lot about transparency, and we believe that the only way that we're going to have transparency is to have everyday Angelinos engaged from the beginning. And so we urge you to amend the ballot initiative proposal to include hearings upfront and not after the fact. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Peter Bebring from the ACLU of Southern California. Thank you. To echo the comments of Mr. White, Ms. Abdullah, and Ms. Lane, we do support the Council's attention to the issue of police discipline and this careful study that's set forth in item number five, the attention to the crucial issue of transparency, the current process is far too secretive, accountability and liability, and civilian participation. However, what is, before this Council and this committee in item number four, is not a workable solution as it currently stands. It is, it does not increase civilian oversight. It does not, it makes it harder to hold officers accountable and would pave the way for more leniency in discipline. And we oppose that unless it is amended to allow the Council to incorporate the recommendations of the ad hoc committee through the hearing process that's created by item number five. So we would oppose unless amended. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Smith, Cliff, please come forward.
Good morning, Council President. Councilman Cliff Smith, Coalition for Community Control Over the Police. I've served six years on the South Central Neighborhood Council. I'm the elected business manager of the Roofers Union Local 36. We appreciate your opening the discussion about amending the city charter to address problems with police transparency and discipline, but the proposal is inadequate. The board of rights itself is a problem. The police commission also is inadequate to be able to investigate the police sufficiently. It does not have disciplinary authority. I would refer you to the board that was implemented in Newark, New Jersey, two years ago by Mayor Raz Baraka, which has not only subpoena power, but it also has mandatory disciplinary authority over the department. The findings of the all-civilian board are mandatory as far as their disciplinary recommendations to the chief. I have a copy of the executive order that was implemented by Mayor Raz Baraka, as well as an article from the Wall Street Journal detailing exactly how this board was set up under a federal consent decree of the Justice Department with the involvement of the state of New Jersey and the ACLU. It's something that we could easily put into place in Los Angeles. May I present this?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much.
Do you give that to the sergeant? Okay. Mr. Spindler, since there was an amendment to this issue, you'll be afforded more time.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm hearing now a lot of different things, which, it happens too much here in this room, everywhere. What I read was one board, civilians. Now I'm reading you got option A and option B. Well, I mean, in the perfect world, you know, everybody would love to choose who's going to adjudicate their case. I think it's a one-size-fits-all. I think we do it with a civilian board, or we go back to the way it is. Because you remember, the big problem in the Copley situation is the fact that the chief discriminates and retaliates against those captains that don't do what he wants. This could be a police chief issue rather than a structural issue. But if we're going to move this forward, none of this choosing stuff, it's got to be one way or another. One board for everybody. That's the way it's got to be. That's the only way to be consistent.
So I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone that submitted a card that would like to say something? Please let me know. Okay. So now if I could get the department, department folk to come forward. Okay, just a couple of quick questions. The report that suggests that things are more lenient in the event that you have citizen participation, who put that report?
That was me, Councilmember Josh Drake from the CLA's office.
Okay. Did you go through case by case by case by case yourself? Or were you given a document that had already had that data?
I was provided this data by LAPD. I would also say this is completely historic.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. Harid, I have a question for you. I heard earlier today that there would be problems in having, you see, as part of this process, we wanted to have some community hearings, because I'm going to create this ad hoc committee. And I had heard that we could not have these committee hearings prior to the election?
I don't know. Harid, Treasury from the City Attorney's Office. No, community hearings can occur at any time, and you can gather information regarding the topics discussed in the motion at any time, before the election or after the election.
So we will be able to have a conversation if this committee decided to go into the community and get, you know, recommendations, or not recommendations, well, recommendations for later, but if we wanted to actually hear, we could take this committee and go out into the community and have an actual committee hearing?
Yes, to gather information, as long as it's not promoting the ballot measure.
All right. And so just for those, you know, I was of the impression that we could do that, and I want to make sure that I can, because we will have, at a minimum, we'll have one hearing at a minimum on this prior to this going on the ballot in the event that we get the votes to move this forward. So they, right now, when you go through this process, do they have retired officers or public safety folk that are part of this process?
I think that might be a question for the Executive Director of the Police Commission.
Good morning, Mr. President. Members of the committee. Richard T. Fank, Executive Director of the Board of Police Commissioners. Of our current 38 hearing examiners, we have one who is a retired sergeant from Los Angeles Police Department.
Okay. So we only have one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I understand some of the concerns from the command staff and the chief would be that they would want to ensure that there's involvement from police departments. So I would think that we should look at the recruitment or broadening our criteria so that we would select individuals who were retired police. So that, when we say civilian, we're talking about all of that. But I just wanted, so at this point, we have one individual that...
Yes, sir, we do. The only exclusion we have currently is you cannot be an active peace officer and apply to being a hearing examiner, but there's no exclusion if you're retired. We just have not had any retired folks apply, although I will say, we have received in the last 60 days, three applications from retired peace officers.
Are they from the Los Angeles Police Department or neighboring police departments? Or does that, would that even matter?
That would not matter, but the three that we have received are from the Los Angeles Police Department.
Thank you. Did you have any questions, Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Yes, specifically on this issue of law enforcement personnel or former law enforcement personnel. So you cannot be an active peace officer in any law enforcement agency or just Los Angeles Police Department?
Any law enforcement organization.
You can't be FBI, you can't be...
That's correct, sir.
Active in any way.
Yes, sir. That's current.
And does that also apply to people who work for district attorneys, city attorneys, so on and so forth?
If they are a peace officer, some of those individuals would be peace officers, some would not be. If you were not a peace officer, would not apply.
It was okay if you're not a peace officer?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
When were the last time that there were any changes to the board of rights?
We added five hearing examiners, I believe it was in September of 2016. In 2005, we completed a complete review of the entire universe of hearing examiners at that time, based on the commission direction. All the current examiners at that time reapplied, and we also advertised, and we reappointed some of the current examiners.
But there's been no change to the structure of it since...
No, sir.
9192?
92, yes, sir. The structure is, is right now within the charter.
Okay. And have there been any studies or reviews in the past 20 years to see if that should be altered at all?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
All right. I don't have any more other questions. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
I had some additional questions about the CLA report. It seemed to make a pretty strong suggestion about leniency. I wanted to hear more explanation about how you all arrived at that opinion and sort of where you got your data, sort of building on the question that the Chair asked earlier.
Sure. I got all the data on the cases from LAPD, and the data is completely historic. It doesn't, it doesn't talk about what would be the case if we had civilian examiners in the future, but the data did show that civilians are in general, or in every case, much more lenient than the sworn officers. When there were split decisions, the civilian would usually, or would be always, on the more lenient side.
So that begs a question for me, is how are the civilian members selected or recruited? How do people even know? For instance, I've lived in Los Angeles forever. I've been an activist. Police discipline's been an issue that's been important to me. Never occurred to me to apply to do this. I don't know that I would have even qualified if it had occurred to me. So what are the, what kind of pools are we going to to find people? What kinds of people are we finding? And I just, I have trouble with the idea that because someone is a civilian, they are necessarily in this category of more leniency. So I'm trying to unpack how we got there.
If I may, sir, I'll respond to that. The current pool of civilian hearing examiners, the vast majority of them come from a background of being professional mediator arbitrators. Some are retired administrative law judges. So they do understand the administrative law process that the board of rights is composed of. So basically, I would say, with my experience in talking with these examiners over the 13 years I've been in my position, they look at the facts. The facts drive their decision-making. And they look at them from their administrative law background. We have folks who are human resources executives. They understand that we have some individuals who are citizens who just applied. As to how one finds out about it, when we are looking for examiners, we will advertise it through the personnel website, on the commission website. In the past, in the early 2000s, when we did our complete review of the process, we did a significant amount of press release on that, and we received a large number of applications. So I would say that, from my experience, the civilians that sit on the panel clearly understand their role. They are trained. They understand the process that they're to go through to make their decision. The data will show what it shows as far as how they have voted in certain circumstances. I will say, from our staff perspective, we don't keep a track record of how a civilian voted. We just want to know, did they engage themselves? Did they understand the issues? Did they participate? We don't care what their verdict was, guilty, not guilty, or if they reduced or increased any recommendation for penalty. We want them to be engaged in the process and give the individual officer a fair hearing.
Sure. I appreciate that. That makes sense. So the places you said that there's advertising is on the personnel website, on the commission website, and where else?
We would also, if we were going to do an expansion, we would do a general press release, put it out through various, we've done in the past through council districts, put it out as mechanisms that we can. Currently, we have sufficient numbers of hearing examiners.
Sure.
If we were to increase that, that's how we would go about doing it. Reach out through council offices, through media, and other ways to get our information out for people to apply.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. And let me just add that the motion that's under consideration by your committee today under item number six does instruct the CLA to report back with a thorough and comprehensive review of those same questions you're asking today. So we'll be coming back with that information. I'd just like to add, we do have just historical information, which it deals with a board of rights that's composed of two sworn and one civilian. There's no way of knowing how a board composed entirely of civilians would vote on items.
Sure. Thank you all. And so this is, this is just sort of me with a question as a citizen and a person who's tracked this issue really most of my life, and any of you can take a stab at it. You know, by my count, and I'm just sitting here jotting notes, my staff did not go through this and do an exhaustive list, but from the point of view of a citizen, when there's potential misconduct, there's the chief, there's the inspector general, there's a police commission, there's a board of rights, and now we're proposing there might be two different kinds of boards of rights. There's a city attorney, and there's a district attorney. So from the point of view of the public, a lot of times, maybe, well, like, who's in charge? in charge, like, who's in charge of this? It can feel like, when trust is an issue, as it has been historically in Los Angeles, part of the way we arrived at this system, when trust is an issue and you have all these different parts, it can look like, oh, that's just a front to get the outcome that the people in power want. So, my question is, how does this compare to other municipalities, I guess, big cities in the country? Were we to, does anybody else have a model where there are two different Boards of Rights and the, the accused person gets to pick the one that they want? How does that, how does that compare to, to other places?
When I was writing the report, I looked at California jurisdictions, because the California Peace Officers Bill of Rights is, is pretty unique to our state, and a lot of models from other states wouldn't work as well. No one does the BOR like the city of Los Angeles. Lots of cities use mediators and binding arbitration. Other cities use civil service commission rules. There's no model like ours anywhere else. And I, I, I'm not sure about this, but I would, I would wager there's no cities with two different types of disciplinary boards.
And what might be the advantages to our system over the others?
I don't know if there's advantages to ours over others. I know that it, there, there is an advantage for officers who are, they're tried for their transgression, I guess you can say, but no discipline is handed down until they've had a fair hearing. Other cities impose discipline and then offer an officer the right to appeal. Thank you, that's it.
No, thank you. Great questioning. Well, I appreciate all of the work that you've put in to this. I really appreciate the community coming, the representatives from BLM and LACAN and, and ACLU and Community Coalition. Is there another card? Did you have a card? I don't, I didn't see it, but come on up and identify yourself. Oh, there it is, okay. Ms. Cabrera?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Adriana Cabrera. I am the education representative from the Central Amira Neighborhood Council. I am here today to ask that you consider creating an independent board, separate from the LAPD that investigates disciplinary actions committed by the LAPD. In our neighborhood council, we have, the area in South Central, we've had, had a lot of killings happening. A lot of young males who are black and brown have been murdered by the LAPD. And I think in order for us to reestablish some type of trust among the LAPD, there has to be transparency. The LAPD cannot be in charge of investigating their own accusations that the community's making. If you, I would really appreciate if you'd take the time to also look at the neighborhood councils, because I know for, for a fact that two of them in South LA have written a resolution where we are advocating for an independent board to be established.
Okay, well, this, this committee also works directly with the neighborhood councils, so their opinion means a great deal to us, so I will review that. And as I was getting ready to say earlier, as I was thanking some of the other groups for coming down, I have been, not instructed, but have gotten the word that we will be able to put on hearings prior to this. So, I'm going to try to structure a panel where I will ask a rep from all of the organizations that were here earlier to participate in that, that, that hearing, and that'll give you an opportunity not only to voice your concerns where it relates to this process, but to make other recommendations as well. So, I look forward to that, and I would hope that BLM, ACLU, Community Coalition, and LACAN would participate, because this is your official invitation. So, with that said, I want to thank everybody for coming here. And Mr. Harris-Dawson, what I'd like to do is to see if we can have this conversation in council. So, in order to do that, I'd like to, on item four, adopt the city attorney's report and resolution and ordinance with option one as amended, and on options five and six, adopt those motions. Those are the motions that deal with the creating of the ad hoc, deal with transparency, and I think in order, at the end of the day, we're going to have to have all of those things moving forward in, in order to try to regain trust with the community. So, no objection. Harith, did you want to say something?
I just want to clarify that the committee today is recommending option one, which is to amend Charter Section 1070H to authorize council to adopt an ordinance, providing an accused officer the option of requesting an all civilian Board of Rights for all disciplinary matters that go before the Board of Rights.
Thank you. Okay, so, with that said, this committee is adjourned. Thank everyone.